I'll call the planning commission to order. Three of us are present today, so we do have quorum. There are no public hearings today. The one that we had planned is canceled since. If there is any in attendance today that are going to be speaking outside of the city officials, as always, if you could stand and why administer an oath? Thank you. Do you swear affirm to tell the truth to this commission?
Yep.
All right, thank you. You may be seated. If you do speak, I believe our microphones at the tables are working, or you can always go to the podium, whichever you feel more comfortable with. Again, we have no cases today, so we'll move on to communications. Understand there's been a change in the design of the plan unit development for Milliron and Union. Tony Farrion?
Yes.
Is that pronounced correctly?
Farrion, yeah.
Farrion, okay. Thank you. You'd like to come up in case there are any questions about the new plan. Paul, plan where you're going to be giving a little summary of the changes?
I'll let Mr. Farrion do that, actually, but I do have copies of his new plans for you.
Thank you.
One for each of us?
That's a big ticket, aren't you doing this stuff, huh?
Melanie, you don't get one.
Yeah.
I didn't figure as much.
Do you need one for your purposes?
Do you need one for your purposes?
No. Basically, the old concept had stack parking and not enough parking. And I know how the city is about having the right amount of parking per bedroom. So we made a shift. It's not bad for amendments. The only amendment that I would have to make as far as PUD is concerned is the under-two-acre requirement. But other than that, I think we meet all the other requirements of the PUD. So that was, you know, the shift of philosophy had moved from one to the other, and primarily of the concern of not enough parking and stack parking. I was really afraid that was going to get turned down. Even though I understand that the board or planning commission, you guys look at it and are kind of supporting it, but, you know, I still have to go in front of the city or the community. And the fear, basically, of getting that turned down because of the law that says one of the run-of-parking. We made a shift here.
You have to agree to, I think, the amendments?
Yeah, we have. The buildings have not changed. Actually, these two buildings are the same now. They're still the same. We were in a little office in right here, and we backed off of that. So we basically went straight back to the same concept of 54 bedrooms in this unit, and there are 30 bedrooms in this unit. Twenty-four units with 54 beds. Twelve units with 30 bedrooms. All two- and three-bedroom units.
Twenty-four units with 54 beds?
Is the bigger building?
Twelve units with 30 beds?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
All two- and three-bedroom units.
Okay. And next question, of course, is parking is adequate, one per at this point, and not stacks?
Yeah, that is correct. There's actually a few extra.
Yeah, I see about seven extra.
That's correct.
I'm counting 91 parking spaces for a total of 84 residents.
Where does it say?
Parents coming town from Spain, kids come in town, and that just takes one more car off the street so they can park there.
And green space has been reduced, though. Is that what I'm seeing on here? How much water do we have right now?
I think somewhere around 25 percent. We have it drawn over there, but we've greened it. You want to see it?
Okay.
And they said, how's this work? You have one side facing Milliron, one side facing East Union?
Yes, sir.
And then you have the parking underneath on the sort of the sort of interior courtyard of the development?
Yes.
And then the bedrooms or the units go all the way to the ground level on the Milliron?
No, they'll be elevated above the parking.
So what is this, just storage or something? I guess what occurs on the?
Oh, underneath there, that would just be open space, yeah.
Flood plane issue again?
Yeah.
Although you will, you have some elevation going on, right?
Yeah, we understand the flood plane. You know, we've built a couple other buildings over there.
Blow-through utilities.
Actually, this will actually flow through better because it is open.
Okay.
I brought some copies of elevations. I know it wasn't required in the original reading through the documents and application, but if anybody wants to see what the buildings will look like, they bring a site elevation of what the buildings will look like, the character of the buildings. We will be tearing down four old homes over there and completely renovating the whole. It's about a $3.5 million project altogether. So to bring, you know, the neighborhood, the influence of the neighborhood and the community back into this area with some regeneration, with some, you know, good-looking buildings and...
Okay.
Paul, have anyone reviewed the earlier that was going to go to the public hearing? It seemed like everyone had signed off.
The city had reviewed it, yeah. We gave comment back on public works and all of that, yeah.
The previous one or the present?
The previous. The present has not been reviewed whatsoever.
Okay.
It would probably be pretty much in line. Buildings are similar, et cetera, so... But we will have that for the next meeting.
There are lighting. Always the lighting component requested by the police chief, and you always have to comply with fire standards, but I don't recall much more. Do you remember what Andy's statements were?
Well, Andy liked the PUD better than Title 41s because of the cross utilities, crossing each other's parcels. And then he was talking about the curbs and the sidewalks, which I believe Mr. Farrion and him are going to discuss in the future here, so...
And I actually do will bring better lighting in because, I mean, all the underneath this will all be lit up. So anybody in this whole area is going to benefit from the lighting as far as on the ground as opposed to not good lighting. How's that?
When you say it's open here, I mean, the parking, of course, goes in. The other side will be just stairs and a utility building in the middle, the central area. Okay.
Yes, sir. So what's facing the streets will actually won't be open.
Yeah.
Which will actually give it an aesthetically better presence as opposed to, you know, what you're seeing on the street, sitting on pillars. Those will be kind of closed back in here, and aesthetically, I think that'll look better than just putting the whole thing on a bunch of pylons, basically.
Yeah, yeah. Okay. I see. What do you think?
Well, I mean, I think, you know, you gave the courtyard approach a good try, but it wasn't going to be sufficient.
I'm not worried, being plus the stack parking. Although, I was really afraid they wouldn't, they would not, that the council would not approve it, which would put me back to square one again, so...
Where are with the trees? I mean, it looks like the same number, or maybe not. What do you think?
That's why I think we have more, believe it or not. Well, we are above what I think the shade tree commission will request.
Okay.
I'm sure they'll want to take a look at it, too.
And then the parking, I mean, it seems like there's sub-containments. You wouldn't need to park over, you have enough, I guess, spots for this unit on this side of the median.
Right.
Okay.
Yeah, actually, that, you bring up a good point. That's another reason for the PUD is, as a whole, see, because this is 54 bedrooms, we have 52 spots here. So then I have to start deed restricting because there'll be extra here. As a whole, I meet all the requirements. As a whole, there's with, you know, we met with Andy Stone prior to this on the concept of this whole thing, and the actual sewer, sanitary sewer, is better equipped to handle all this than the one over here. And actually, the storm is better equipped, and the water is better equipped from this road, Milliron. So I won't have to go easement-wise, back and forth, back and forth. As a whole, I won't even require that easement right there. So I'll be one project instead of the breaking up, which would be required as a Title 41.
Okay. I have no other questions. You know, pending a quick review, it sounds like nothing's really changed that much. Loss of green space in general, but you're still under the wire for the 60% rule. As long as the rearrangement of the utilities is not a problem, and the trees, I don't see much of a problem here, but, you know, it's your call. You know, I'm just one person here, so...
Right. Well, I mean, I know this plan won't work with the new legislation we were proposing of the...
That's not in effect yet.
So it's not in, but, yeah. No, I understand that. But, I mean, I guess I just, I don't know how much the green space would be used there if it was put in place. I mean, a lot of these, you are just looking for a sort of a bedroom, and I think this is going to be a relatively safe environment because of the openness of it. And I think they're going to work as kind of autonomous because of the fact that, whereas this would have set up, they probably would have, you know, been more one sort of, it looked like one large development, whereas this one, I think, one facing Milliron and one facing Union like this, they might start to feel like, you know, two separate developments and not just sort of a super block, so to speak. So I'm, you know, I'm okay with that. Again, I wasn't here for the initial...
Right.
So I apologize for...
That's all right.
Maybe more questions that were already developed.
So this buffer in between the two is a tree line with some shrubbery, it looks like, or bushes or small trees?
Yeah, smaller, mid-trees, I think they classify them as.
Okay. And it's got to be less than 20 feet, about 10-foot width there, maybe? Less, a little bit less than that?
On the parking?
No, right here.
Oh, it's probably like...
It's eight feet.
Eight feet? Okay, that's what I was wondering, okay.
Yeah, it's a nine-foot spot.
Okay.
No obies?
Actually, that was a Ms. Grant.
What's that?
He has one of our parking lots. That's all right.
Green area.
Hmm, interesting. You're right. Should flip them, I guess. And again, I know the chief always talks about lighting. I guess the trees in the middle will not affect lighting, and you said there's lighting underneath, underneath in the parking area.
Yeah, plus these corridors are well lit up. If you go down and look at the couple buildings we've already done, you know, they stay lit up all the time, which is well light. If they have any other concerns, you know, we could put some lights, you know, on the sides of buildings.
Makes sense.
Which actually, John brought to my attention, I was going to do anyways, I just don't have a problem with that. How's that?
This isn't necessarily a purvey, but one thing I wonder if it could happen is if the trash recycling, since you only have one, if they could, you could either have one for each unit bins, and then if it could be in the building, like in the, you know, since you have extra stalls, if like, you know, these two stalls could become a place where that just to get it out of sight. And again, it's not real afterpay, it's just sort of a...
Actually, we did think about that. We talked about...
At least getting an empty area in there, right? Just because of the fact that I think it's going to be hard to traverse the two sides.
Really, Tony, with the number of people you're going to have in there, working with Athens, talking on getting a centralized recycling, not necessarily, you know, all the orange tubs. It seems to work better in apartment complexes if you have larger containers that are identified for whichever need until we get that dual streaming block.
We actually, on the Stewart Street building, we worked with Rumpke over there. I find that personally, I like them a lot better. They're cleaner, they pick up the trash around the trash cans, they do an absolute better job for us than Athens recycle, that they don't take care of any of our trash cans, they throw the trash all, they just throw the cans with trash in them all over the place. And these guys are very efficient, very efficient. And I know that doesn't have anything to do with this meeting, but my preference is to work with Rumpke on this. I just think that they're better suited for what I do and the cleanliness of my projects.
What I'm hearing from Nicholas, of course, is that you might have to give up one of those parking spaces for recycling and trash collection on the bigger building size, because you've got on the smaller one, right?
Yeah, it's on the smaller. I mean, again, it's just a suggestion, it has no, you know...
I don't have a problem with that. We actually did talk about, you know, taking a little area here and putting our trash up underneath it.
But I would like to see one for each building at least. I just, I just think it's going to be, you know, one a clean building and one where, you know, you start to get bags collecting with people.
Sure.
Unfortunately, basically, you know, taking it to... And because of also where it's positioned right now, it's kind of out of sight for that building, so...
One thing I can say about our company is we have a lot of properties in this area, and we're, every single day, our people are out patrolling our properties. And the number-one thing on our board when you hit the morning in the maintenance shop is cover the properties, clean up the trash. So I don't know if who else does that. Maybe they do, maybe they don't, but I know we do because it's a reflection of our company.
Okay. Otherwise, I don't have other companies.
Yeah, Nicholas makes a good point. I mean, I'm thinking dead of winter, how many people want to take their garage from here or way over here if they don't have to? And then there's always the bag-tearing aspect of it, too. They could lose it halfway through the bushes there or on the sidewalk.
Is the exterior largely brick or?
No, it's all actually a cement floor. Party plant is what it's called. So I don't know if you can lay with product or not. It's a solid product.
Low maintenance.
Similar to what you have on your other project at 12?
Exactly. We're both in the same field. Everything's going to be the same. We're trying to structure that area with the same field.
What do you think you're going to do for the, this sort of ground level? We said you're going to close that off.
What do you mean?
What sort of, is this just a cement? Are you, along this?
Oh, the small concrete wall.
Okay.
Yeah.
Structure.
Yeah.
Put some ivy in it.
Yes. Some columns, too, white columns. Maybe part of our use, taste, I don't know. So do we need a motion on this?
Well, we, it's just a communication.
Oh, yeah.
We don't need a motion, I mean, but again, unfortunately, you're going to have to come back with a change of plan to get approval again, but, you know...
It's okay.
It should be relatively painless. The city, again, will review it like the last time, I would think. I don't know, what's the schedule look like for our review process?
We did publish public notice yesterday, so that for the PUD, that gives 14 days' notice for a public hearing at the next planning commission meeting on March 2nd, 3rd.
Yeah.
So that was in yesterday's Athens Messenger, so we can have a public hearing in two weeks at the next planning commission. The planning commissioners, if they want to have the public hearing, vote at that point they can. If they want to wait until the meeting afterwards, that's up to the decision of the planning commissioners. We'll have reviews done in that time and present a review at that public hearing.
I think if we could at least have a rundown of the reviews...
Oh, absolutely.
At, you know, prior to the start of the public hearing or...
Sure.
That would be, you know, helpful, so...
Yeah.
What's the date of public hearing again?
It'll be two weeks from yesterday.
Or it won't be prior, it won't be in advance of our regular meeting? What held it, this regular meeting?
We have it scheduled at the regular meeting.
March 2nd.
Yeah.
All right. Oh, yeah, it's Thursday.
Yeah, it's around Thursday. We're all messed up because we had other, we weren't around yesterday.
Okay.
Okay, so it sounds like it's a go. I mean, unofficial matter, I guess.
Yeah. Harry will be at that meeting, so it'll be one more person in the city, so...
I have one last question, Paul. Is that portion of East Union approved? Is that, if this is...
Yes. When you say approved, you mean, oh, paved?
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, it's paved.
Yeah, it was actually over there. It goes against parking law, but it's a university, or I was wrong, but I think it's a university.
Okay. I would like to add as well that he did submit for the Title 41 applications, just in case something was denied on the PUD that he got the Title 41s in under the gun before the changes come in.
No, actually, they're like way up here. This is River Park, is what they call it lately. It's not like there anymore. River View.
Yeah, I see where they're at.
Yeah.
Now, does the variance that they've already received previously, how does it?
We were talking about that, Paul.
We were just speaking about that. We'd have to double-check, but my instinct tells me that the variance was approved based upon the plans that were provided to the Board of Zoning Appeals. And if there's a significant change from the plans that were provided, that that variance would no longer be, that variance would be null and void. Now, just in speaking with Mr. Farrion prior to the meeting, I got, I'm under the impression that this site plan brings in a lot less fill than he was going to need to with the previous site plan, so I think it's a moot point. I think he's going to be, he should be bringing in fill that would be permitted without a variance, is my impression, but we'll double-check that.
So either way, it'll be either the variance requested for...
Well, he'll have to get the flood plane, or the flood hazard application anyways for the Title 41, and at that point, we'll figure out how much fill. And if he's less than half cubic foot per square foot, then he's in compliance with the code, so...
Correct. I thought it kicked in when you had an extra, where is that extra lot? That was this one right here? No, it's not there anymore.
It's covered on here.
Yeah, it's included in there, so it's due with the... I guess, I didn't understand the planning thing. I always kind of thought a variance went with the property.
It does.
It does, but if...
But it goes with the plans. If you get a variance, for an example, if you get a variance for a 500-square-foot addition, that doesn't give you the right to build a 1,000-square...
Right in the back. With the conditions of the land or, you know what I mean? I don't know.
I didn't see the actual ruling itself, too. Of course, as applied with the plans, contingent upon certain things.
Well, the plans have changed, and I think that's the discussion.
The best I can tell you is we're really into it.
I really don't believe I'm going to fall anywhere close to what I was going to have to bring. Like, none of this is going to have, I'm not, I'm not even still out of here. And then the minimum amount of dirt that I need to bring in here is very minimum, as a matter of fact, so...
So...
But I think that's great that these guys are going to...
Look into it.
Want to be good with the calculator.
So is this a, these are the existing lot lines, right? This new plan was before we were, it was, you were going?
It was there, that is correct. There's actually seven lots there that I'll be putting together.
Okay. But are you going to maintain as two lots then?
If I have to go to Title 41, I will. In this particular case, I want to put all seven lots together.
Okay.
So it was kind of designed in case it didn't get through council, that we could still use this as a Title 41.
Right.
That was the...
I see what you're saying, okay.
Okay. Sounds good.
Would there be, this is a question for the planner, would there be, I guess, a reason on the part of the city to, you see how the existing, or the updated site plan is, where there's a property on Milliron Street and a property on Union?
Mm-hmm.
Would there be any advantage for the city in still having two properties then? Or I'm thinking, Tony, like, for future development of not joining all that together?
Well, as a PUD, they'd have to be combined.
Okay.
Yeah. PUD is a plat, so at that point, that's a, that's an existing subdivision that you can't change. You can't partition off chunks of a PUD. It's platted as is. So they'd have to be combined as a PUD. If it's a Title 41, you know, we've got properties all over town that have three lots that still exist as three lots with one building on it, so that would...
A good example would be that building right across the street that we built.
Okay.
From a city perspective, I think it would only complicate things...
Okay.
If it's kept as two lots, yeah.
Definitely, but I'm just thinking, long-term, if you wanted to sell off one, you know, one unit or...
Have to go as a whole.
Exactly. Okay.
Actually, that would be his job, because I don't plan on selling.
Okay. Well, I don't have any further comments, any more discussion, but...
Nope. I think we're good.
Thanks for your time.
Thank you.
So the public hearing's going to be March 2nd. We're going to split you.
Which has already been advertised.
Yes. At that point, we can make a living one way or the other, except for, and of course, has to go to the...
12.
City Council.
24 units.
And the only variance rate we're talking about is still...
I guess I'd agree with you on that. Maybe we have any rent calculation in the dirt.
But the board of zoning deals still have to...
Give me a count next week.
Possibly.
Possibly. Well, actually, he doesn't have to do the fill. The main question was the size of the lot and the fill. If it was over one acre, if you know, we had to have a different ratio of compensating fill. You can ask Paul about, Paul, about that for the exact...
Okay. I'll take it out here. I give you, jump in a second to prepare. The other item on the communications is internet cafe, and I understand that you have an update on research on that.
Yeah, I, well, it's prepared, I suppose, so... The, John and I, this is recommended from myself and John for following the request from City Council in relation to the internet cafes. This is the recommended language that we have. The, there's three parts to it. I think only two of them pertain specifically to the planning commission. There are recommendations to, there's four parts to it, excuse me. Page one and two relate to the zoning code. Page three and thereafter is part of the business code. So the planning commission, you're welcome to look at it, et cetera, make comments on it, but that would be, I believe, at the discretion of the City Council as to whether they accept it or not. But zoning code, there's three parts that are, one is in addition to 2304, creating 230407A, which is relating to sweepstakes, internet cafes. The language I've used is essentially a mirror of what the city already has on its books in relation to sexually-oriented businesses. I eliminated significant parts of that because there's all kinds of language in there that is specific to the nature and type of the sexually-oriented business, so I didn't think it was germane to this conversation, but I did keep the remaining parts for distance requirements, et cetera. Then there's a recommendation for two definitions to be added to the zoning code, and then a recommendation for off-street parking requirements. And these are off, all of these definitions, et cetera, we culled from best practices that we saw going around throughout the state of Ohio in relation to the same issue. The same with the business code. I'm not going to say that we created anything brand-new. We looked at what other cities were doing, and it was all pretty similar, and it seemed to be pretty inclusive relative to the court cases and the situations that have come up around Ohio, so... And as far as those distance requirements, nothing has changed on them from the mapping that I provided two weeks ago. I don't know if you brought this with you, but...
I have a copy here, yeah.
Yeah, nothing has changed from that. It's the same, 1,000-foot distances, et cetera, so the mapping I gave two weeks ago would stand as far as potential locations.
And the hours of operation? I see you have that in 11:10:07, and that's adequate, 12 hours?
Yeah, again, those are, I will not claim to be an expert on whether the times, the fees, all of that I put in there.
Okay.
Those, I would say, are really subject to the, whatever City Council would want to do. I don't know whether being closed from 10 to 10 is reasonable, or if it should be 9 be 9 to 10, or from midnight to 10. I really don't know.
Same here.
So it is generic in that sense, I suppose.
Okay.
And I think if the Planning Commission wants to move forward with anything, I believe we'll have to have a public hearing.
Yeah, any...
Does the zoning code change, I believe, so?
Yeah, I think we discussed that previously, where if it was an addition to the zoning, it would be something, if it was, you know, where we had spelling, grammatical...
We could ignore it.
Yeah. It'd be more of an embarrassment to want a public hearing for those.
Type of. If I've been done before, though.
Yeah. Well, again, I don't think we, we can hold discussion now. I don't think we should put any motion forward until Harry, we have a full Planning Commission present. He's had a chance to digest it for any addition to our zoning code.
If that's the case, we mail it to Harry, so when he gets back, he can, he probably has a full mailbox already, but at the same time.
I think so.
Okay. Looks good, actually. I mean, you know, it's a start. I'm sure there's something we're missing in here, but I can't see it right now. Looks like it'll cover both sides, the business side and the zoning side.
Yeah, the only part I'm really, Phil, I suppose, we do have business code regulations in relation to the sexually oriented businesses. I guess it's probably more the purview of the auditor. There's things in there about who would be the, there would be a registration process, and from my perspective, I don't know if that would be code enforcement, auditor, service safety director, all of those things I had, I had questions on.
Yeah.
So I think that would need a detailed evaluation, probably by the lot director, the auditor, and City Council, and mayor, and service safety director.
Yeah, procedure-wise.
Right.
Offhand, it would sound like a combination of, at least, the code and the auditor to start with.
Right.
After that, it depends.
Yeah, I mean, my only concern is the, is the locations in the buffer. I don't, I mean, the sexually oriented business, if I remember correctly, was not a Planning Commission recommendation, wasn't it?
I don't know.
I thought it was handled all by City Council.
No, it's in the zoning code, too.
I believe it, it should have gone through the Planning Commission, at least for a review.
Yeah, I guess I just don't...
But it's in zoning code.
Previous administration.
Oh, okay, that's what it means.
That's why you wouldn't remember it.
Yeah, it was before any of us were...
Okay.
Debbie Phillips actually was one of the, the council side champion, which means it was able administration at the time.
Yeah. I, yeah, I mean, I just always wondered with the locate, you know, is it better to, if we're gonna have these to have, you know, you know, obviously, we're looking at it as it's a vice, that's something that needs to be regulated very stringently. Is it better to put it in a, you know, to create a sort of quote-unquote skid row, you know, if that's, if that's how we're looking at these things, that it is gonna create a bad, you know, this is a bad environment, so do we want to zone an area of our city that we say, this is where bad environment should go?
I don't think we would plan that.
And obviously, none of us want to plan that way. So, but, you know, we do understand you can't legislate, you know, things out of the city that are legal. So, you know, is it better to put it next to, say, a religious worship space, or something where there is a positive influence to, you know, outweigh any negative that we may see? And I'm kind of playing devil's advocate, so I just always worry about the locational...
I think most people would say no to that question.
Was that...
Most people would say no to that question, I think. Most community members, but I'll...
Well, I, you know, I mean, the Hoser Clinic objected, a sweepstakes getting located right next to it. Would Autotech, who just put up their new building, object to it?
Church and bingo to go, go together with that place, Internet Cafe, bingo?
So that's my only concern, and I think, I guess, can we, if a thousand feet is the, is the, it seems like the most limiting we could be, like, can we...
No, we could do 2,000 feet, as long as, as long as it provides for any space. Again, I, I use the 1,000 feet because that was, seemed reasonable by City Council when they adopted the sexually oriented businesses, and it did provide for opportunities. This does have, if you look at the distance requirements, number six, any other sweepstakes Internet Cafe business, so they have to be 1,000 feet minimum from each other. So that does restrict the creation of a, you know, yeah, downtown Las Vegas, something like that.
Could someone challenge that, though? If you had 1,500 feet versus 1,000 feet, why are you, you know, assessing me 1,500 feet versus...
It could be challenged. Anything can be. These type of distance requirements have continuously been held up in courts of law as being legal, so.
Okay.
But in terms of consistency, if, I mean, if you're just saying, like, for instance, if you wanted to increase the...
Oh, that, say, a sexually oriented business is 1,000, why is it sweepstakes 1,500 or something? Like, do they should be uniform?
Well, they're different uses, so you could, yeah, somebody could certainly challenge it. I guess it's not for me to determine whether they would win or not. And again, I think 1,000 feet was reasonable for that type of a use. It seems as if it would be reasonable for this type of a use, too. Perhaps the Planning Commission thinks it should only be 500 feet or 200 feet. I don't really know. Maybe we think it just needs to be in B3s and M's. Again, I called this from best practices that I've seen around the state, and from what other communities we're working on, where they had established that there was, that they viewed there being a problem. This is being preemptive.
Well, as the city expands outward, though, would it make more sense then to, you know, talk about the idea of increasing, you know, the amount of, you know, to 1,500 feet or 2,000 feet?
Well, a lot of that would depend, you're assuming annexation, then the question of course, what do we annex in, and what zones do we annex in? And if we're just going with B3s in this area here, it would, it would be the next B3 we put in. And then, if we start talking about B3s in relationship to churches, you know, museums, schools, I don't, you know, again, in, try to look at the long term. I don't, I don't see any of us doing any real great annexation in terms of B3s in the near future. But then, that's, at that point, when you start saying, look at the footprint of what we're gonna annex in, that, everything we have in play here, if this was in code, would fall to effect. In other words, if there, if the B3 has a church, or a park, or whatever in that zone, automatically all the overlay comes in that.
It's another 1,000 feet.
Yeah.
I think one thing to consider with this and with sexually oriented businesses, with anything that has distance requirements, would be what happens if two additional churches are built in those zones? And now, they've, we've, because of distance requirements...
They couldn't locate.
They can't locate, right. That's possible.
Right, no, very much.
That could easily happen based upon rezonings from downzoning a B to an R. So those are issues we have to watch out for in the future, to make sure that we are not zoning things out of existence if they're, if they're legal. So that's a concern I have down the road, would be based upon other changes.
But also, you know...
Which means that instead of 1,000 feet, we might have to go down to 500 on this type of stuff.
Right.
I was just gonna say, if you're looking really, tendency, I would say the tendency is that most churches are moving out of Athens, you know, as far as like, you know, you had the Wesleyan Church on the corner of Stimson and East State, they've moved out. Some of the smaller churches have moved out.
Yeah, but I mean, you think even if some church that's there, you know, they build up to 1,000 feet, and then the church builds an addition, and now you're stuck at, you know, 960 or something like that, what, they can't, that addition can't be approved?
Well, wait a second. You're assuming that the church can't go within 1,000 feet of an Internet Cafe. It's the other way around. I mean, there's no restriction on how close a church can get to an Internet Cafe. They could build right next door. At that point, that Internet Cafe would become non-conforming.
Right, I see.
Actually, it's not. If you read the business section in there, it would not be non-conforming if the church moved in after that. But if it shut down for six months, and they want to open it back up, then it would be an issue. But if it's the one, whichever comes first. But part of the, some area, or whatever would you call it?
I caught it as...
Skid row.
I couldn't understand what you mean.
But we could have, the way it's written, unless I'm missing something, the sweepstakes Internet Cafe next to a sexually oriented business, or even in the same building. So what if we put a distance requirement between those two as well, or it would say, any other sweepstakes Internet Cafe business and/or sexually oriented?
And we could add that to the sexually oriented business.
I don't know, just to prevent that sort of thing from happening.
I hesitate to co-mingle it, though.
Well, I don't know. I mean, I feel like that's what we're trying to do, is that we're trying to say, we don't want an environment where, we don't really want either of these items in our city, but if they're gonna be, we don't really want them next door to each other.
Would you, just a minute ago, was talking about running a skid row?
I said that was devil's advocate.
Okay.
We could have skid row overlay.
I don't know.
So you, what you're saying...
My theory was, that's what this legislation would create.
What you're saying, John, is that we would just add like a, a number seven?
Number seven.
That says any other, or any...
Yeah.
Sexually oriented business, et cetera.
And amending sexually oriented business as well, to add no, you know, sweepstakes Internet Cafe.
And again, that, that would come down to making sure that if anything pops up, we're not zoning one or the other out of existence.
Right, like if someone beat them in, then...
Yeah, as it comes along.
Well, I mean, can we, but it sounds like in labor legislating, that there can only be one of each in the city. Is that okay?
No, I don't think, I don't think that would be the case.
Maps, so we got room.
Right. Yeah. Oh, yeah, brown.
Would you do the same thing with liquor versus the Internet Cafe, for us?
I don't believe these are permitted to have liquor in them, is my understanding. I know the business code recommends it, but...
But I mean, if somebody wanted to combine, if you're talking about combining.
Like if a bar wanted to have a, yeah, could a bar get a sweepstake? We talked about it...
I don't believe so.
Not in the language that you've provided.
Yeah, the business code language specifically states that they cannot sell liquor, yeah, any intoxicating liquor. I had a comment, and I forgot what it was.
Were we talking about the alcohol that coming?
I still can't figure out with the computer, computerized sweepstakes device definition, how that's different than what is at bars.
I think if you look through the court cases, the court case that I provided, it gives all the background on the difference between them, and et cetera.
Okay. I'll review that.
Yeah. But it's a, it's, the issue is that it's a, it's a sweepstakes, it's, it's a, you potentially win a prize for purchasing something or not purchasing something. The Keno game that's at the, that's at the bars, those are regi, those are handled by the state lottery. So that's a completely different animal that the city, that's controlled at the state level.
Right, right.
If you're just talking about the, I mean, otherwise, a pinball machine or anything like that, that's, that's another separate animal.
Right.
But that's the big difference, is that you're, if you read through the law, the case law on it, you're buying a phone card, and with those phone cards, there's a potential to win cash based upon a sweepstakes, which is separate from gambling and separate from a lottery. It's a fine line, I would say. The distinction's relatively fine there.
Right.
But it's, it is, there is a line that's been drawn, written by the state, to clarify the two. What they say is a sweepstakes is, you know, you can, you see them all the time. Anytime you go to the store, you can, you buy something, and there's a coupon on the back of the box or something, send this in to, for you and your family to want a trip for three to Disney World or whatever. That's a sweepstakes as well, no purchase necessary, et cetera. But these are basically an instant sweepstakes, where you get the feeling of that you're gambling, or that you have a chance to win immediately. So that's, it's the sweepstakes part that separates it out.
Yeah, I'm kind of fuzzy on it myself. The feeling I get is that the sweepstake part is already predetermined.
Right.
Okay.
In other words, the ratio of wins...
That's nothing to do with your gameplay.
Yeah. And in theory, the gameplay is, is, you know, if a slot machine is probably predetermined at some level, too. But I would say it's a fine line that follows it, is that, you know, it's how many times you pull the handle or something like that, and see what happens.
Yeah, that's a huge difference.
Well, yeah, I, again, I'd be open to adding the sort of co-mingling, but I don't know how all members feel about that.
I mean, if your recommendation is for, you're recommending that we make sure that there's not co-mingling?
No, I, what John Paskey suggested, add an item seven to both the 2304, 712, and 2304, 713. Adding that, you know, against any other sexually oriented business, but basically swapping those two, so they can't be, you know, and it's not side by side, they can't be, maybe it's a 500 feet for that one, and not, you know, like, similar to the landmark and historic district item.
Yeah, put it under seven, it's gonna be 1,000.
Okay. I'll use 1,000. Okay.
If we want, if you want to go 1,000 feet, we would just put as number seven, any sexually oriented business as defined in 230407A12.
Are these the only two sort of vice?
Then we gotta add it there, too.
Items we have, I think so.
And the Planning Commission may want to make a recommendation to council that they address this in the sexually oriented businesses section, too, for the same distance requirement, so that...
Yeah, that's what, I agree with that.
Have it in both, okay.
Yeah. It doesn't really work if it's just one.
I kind of hesitate on doing that, but, you know, I have no problem.
I think, I mean, my feeling is it's gonna limit it further, and we are trying to limit it, so it's, to me, we should just go, I guess, as far as we can to, to limit the two.
I guess I worry more about, we get a more diffuse dispersion of it within the city.
In other words, there might be some, I mean, you might, well, regardless, one of these can use it, but yeah, you're right. I mean, I guess that's the, going back to the, the earlier argument, it's better to have a diffusion of them more in one, one spot. So, you know, I don't know.
That's how some of us feel, Nicholas.
Well, I didn't, I didn't contribute anything. I guess it's my...
I did have a point back to what RJ had stated or questioned previously, was the city, no city or municipality is required to provide, to guarantee that there's, like, leasing space available. So you can, if all the storefronts are, as long as there's a legal place to open it by zoning, if all your storefronts are occupied, and there's no leasing space available, or there's no landlord that wants to lease to that type of business, that's not at the, that's not the city's responsibility to find that space for somebody, provided that the zoning code permits it in areas. That's just a question of the market, so.
That's an interesting concept. I mean, we could actually zone it to something so high-end that nobody could afford it, you know, educational institution zone or something like that.
You could only be on the eighth floor of buildings.
Yeah. No, educational institution, I, that might be a tricky slope, I don't know.
Still got Oasis plot right there, you know, it's open. Okay, not sillyness on that, sorry.
Any other comments or discussion before we're putting forward a motion to table until Harry has a chance to review?
Okay, I'll move you table, and...
I'll say that. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Was everyone in favor of the number seven part?
Well, I think, no, it's, it's just being thrown out there for discussion, not, not a vote on the item seven yet. Again, I think I won't, we want Harry's opinion before really doing any sort of approval process.
Okay.
Again, any further discussion?
No.
Okay. One item, communication that I don't, maybe something we could do for the next meeting or very soon, is not to forget the communication towers ordinance, looking into that since Burgess and IPO had contacted the city about putting up the few towers. I don't think there's been any follow-up on that, right, Paul?
There has not.
Okay. But just something to, so we don't lose sight on that as well, before they decide on the site.
Okay, and I have one communication. There was another meeting, was a natural hazard mitigation plan meeting, and that's still rolling forward. There, I think the first, sometime in April, the first, city has to endorse it, which would be Haynesville. We'll have to follow suit sooner or later. That's being worked on with Paul Logue and Bob Eichenberg. Again, there's, there'll be idiosyncrasies within our city in terms of uniqueness, mostly flood issues, and also response in terms of critical, critical facilities. I think that was the main thrust of the discussion that was, that took place Tuesday. So, just so you know. My lot, too.
Okay. Any communications? Okay. Do you have any reports from the city planner?
I have just a few updates, couple notices. The neighborhood associations have been trying to organize a discussion based on the armory. We are going to have a meeting on March 9th at 5:30 PM in this room, that the neighborhood association requested to be put together for people to do a brainstorming session on what to do with the armory. I will be moderating that meeting, but any planning commissioners who are interested in attending or contributing or whatever, please feel free to come. Again, that's March 9th at 5:30 PM. It'll be here.
And again, I will emphasize from the administration point, ideas are welcome, but they, it comes down to, we're in a tight budget, and it's just, anything that we're gonna work on has got to be grounded in reality in terms of finances. That's all, I'm open to ideas, but it's not like we have a boatload of money we can throw at it.
Or any.
Yes, and I'll reiterate... Yes, and I'll reiterate that over and over again, okay, just so.
I'll be bringing proposals as well, so.
I'm sure, okay.
I think it's, I think it's only in the 2.3 million dollar.
And you have a check to write on that?
Taking collections, after.
Is the city open to leasing it?
I, I think that, in the past, we had, the ordinance from 2004 was that it was actually optioned by a lease, and if, at least from my point of view, I, I would prefer leasing it rather than selling it. So a long-term lease would be an option. It would give somebody the ability to actually do some renovations, and establish themselves in.
At their expense.
At their expense, yes. Hey, you know, we're, I, I can, I can say over and over again, we're short of policemen comp, and, you know, and a lot of other personnel, and we need to buy a ladder truck, you know, so there's realities of budgets.
Well, I'm going to go ahead and pass these out, these are from the comprehensive plan that the planner had provided, there should be one for each of you, regarding previously what they indicated for the use of the armory, and looking at it in terms of a centralized art facility, and the bombing hurts and what have you. We'll provide these to the general public, too, at that meeting.
Just as a review, second review.
Any other items?
I'll be meeting with the City Parks and Recreation Advisory Board this evening, they're, at the request of Parks and Recreation Director Rich Campatelli, they are going to start working on a strategic plan for arts park and recreation, and they, Rich asked me to help out with that, so I'll be meeting with them to discuss options and ideas for parks and recreation planning tonight.
Tonight at 5:30, is it?
Yeah.
Is that, that's open to the public?
You know, I, I assume so, it's a, it's an advisory board of the Parks and Recreation Committee on City Council, so.
Okay.
It's not like we're, it's just a general, they're a monthly meeting, but nothing, yeah. I wouldn't say it's anything exciting, from that perspective. I'm not sure how they want to handle a strategic plan, they've done them in the past, et cetera, whether it's going to be, I'm, I'm not sure what they're looking for at this point, so.
Okay.
But, yeah, it's open. That's all I have, this afternoon.
Thank you. John?
The last meeting, I gave everybody a board of zoning appeals summary, and took that a little farther, I think everyone wanted to see what the approval and denial rates of certain cases were, so you have that spreadsheet there in front of you, of what the cases were for the last five years. I think we've had five cases so far this year that are not included on this. So, if that helps explain anything. We did have.
It doesn't for me.
I'll explain it, ask.
I mean, I, I don't know that it clarifies much for me, I, I guess I would have liked to have seen it maybe even by ear, but, basically saying.
Come on, John.
Oh, we can be there.
I know, but you have the statistics, so when you say, we had 43 unparking, percentage of 35%, 35% of the total.
35% of all the cases are parking related.
Cases, okay.
And 23 have been approved, so, yeah, almost 60% approval.
13 to nine, yeah, see, I mean, maybe, that's what I was kind of going for.
Okay.
So 23 of 43 were, what, a little over 50% on approvals for the parking?
Yeah, I mean, I think why we request this, is we, we want to get a sense of what consistently goes in front of the board of zoning appeals, and how, you know, what is the, you know, is there a standard ruling? I mean, it sounds like at 60 to 30, probably not, I mean, I think it's very case specific, but it still seems like parking of the ones on here is the most that we could work on, I mean, I think use, you're never going to, someone's always going to come and try to get a different use in a lot, but I think, and setbacks and coverage, you know, that one, I mean, coming at 30%, that seems like another one we probably could be looking at, especially with us talking about improving the amount of green space in a lot.
You could almost see that increasing, based on the 60% lot coverage.
Yeah, I think we got to be careful on that one, as well.
Again, having been on a zoning board appeals, many times a setback in lot coverage have to do with the older neighborhoods, somebody wants to put on addition, and lots, the size of lot are a constricting part of that, they're under, they're under the 8,000 square feet, I think, rule of, of lots, they need to add something on, they have setbacks, either rear or side setback problems. Lot coverage, of course, is 30%, and usually that's not a problem so much, but it's there. Realize, of course, one reason why I have to look at this, is that there is one of the findings in, in granting of variances, where there'd be better handled by changing the law, which is where we come into play.
Right.
Okay? And, and that's one good thing about looking at this, we can say, okay, what, what changes need to be put in place.
I'd say year-to-year countdown would be appropriate in that sense.
Yeah, well, you see, I do wonder why 30, you know, of the 36 cases, 30 have been approved in those items, and it seems like that's.
Because many of those, I can just give, are, like, an L-shaped house, for example, that they want to fill in the L, basically make it a square, but yet, the rear yard setback, or the side yard setback, may not have been large enough, so therefore, since they're adding the footprint, they have to get a variance, but since they're not really increasing the.
Right, or it's, they did the addition of the L, and it's, it's in the setback, but now they want it completed, can they, right?
Right.
And, again, the high ratio there is that you, you know, in many cases, you just can't stretch the lot anymore, I mean, essentially says, I need, I need this, or I have to reap, in some cases, it's a rebuild, too, I mean, I, if my house burned down tomorrow, I'd be in that, trying to look for setbacks in lot coverage, mostly setbacks, I think, actually, I think you determined it as 31% anyway, right now, so I need setback in lot coverage, but, but that's it, it's, it's not like I can say, I can move my lot one way or the other, you know?
Right. Well, yeah, I almost wonder if we need to take a look at the older neighborhoods and see, are we being specific enough to their needs, you know, is our R1, you know, too all-inclusive, do we need to have another residential zone that's going to, or, it's an overlay with the setback, so we don't have to have as many cases go to board of zoning appeals, if they're generally going to approve the variance anyhow?
I think with the R1s and R2s, with the, if the lot doesn't comply with our ball control and width, then they can reduce it down to the percentage, so, I, I don't know if that's all necessarily a problem, and, and the front yard setbacks, if they're in line with the existing structures on either side of them, then that falls into compliance, so.
Right.
There are some, we've got some things already in the code that would allow the R1, smaller lots, to kind of not fall into our regulations, that still allow them to get through the, without going to the BZA. Many of times, these are maybe a big deck, or something, which, with the new law, that will actually, that'll actually favor them, because the deck now will go into the, the other 30%, so to speak, of the 60%, so.
Right.
I think we just watch and see what happens on that area, but it, it'd probably be okay.
And some of these have to do with topography, too, I mean, some places can't just build, you know, 25 feet back from the front, yeah.
Well, it's still, it's actually impressive to see that there's only been, you know, an average 10 cases a year on parking, or, or something, I mean, it actually seems kind of light, relatively, where you're parking, such a big issue with development, you'd think you'd see a lot more variance cases.
Two out of five so far this year, are parking related.
I find it interesting, all the interpretations we're denying.
They were all the same ones.
Oh, really? One case over and over again.
One case four times, hence.
What about this?
Hence the sexually oriented business.
Oh, I see, okay. We're in court for that.
Let's not talk about that, eh, Michael? All right, well, I guess, Paula, do you, do you want to get, request John to get a little more specific with year-to-year, would that be enough to maybe?
What's another chart, huh?
It's, it's, it's fine, it's an annual report, but.
We know, it's easy, oh, sound clean about.
And I can put percentage, I thought about that, before, putting the percentages next to the proven denied of the amount, percentage-wise, of the actual number of cases for each one, but I didn't want to get too many percentages going both ways, and then confuse you there, too, so, I'll see what I can work out.
And you're going to give this to the zoning board of appeals, as well, they have this date already?
I can do that, so they can see a five-year average of what's going on.
Yeah. Well, I appreciate it.
And then I just want to throw out, we did have two BZA cases last week, Taylor Motors sign that was destroyed during a tornado was approved, and a temporary use for a rental at 24 Spring Street was approved, so that would be a temporary use on here. We do have, as it looks like, two cases next meeting, we already discussed the PUD for Tony Ferriens on March the 2nd, and we've got plans to pass out for you for a Title 41 for integrated services on March the 2nd.
On communication, or?
Those will be cases, in two weeks, so.
We need to get that started internally, has that been submitted yet?
Yes, we've got it right here.
Okay.
Getting ready today. And the last thing I want to add, is that April 12, or April 16th is City Beautification Day, we are working with the uptown businesses, and trying to get out a letter to all of them, to have them chip in and help us out with identifying graffiti, whether they would help work on it, or we'll kind of determine which ones are the more severe, and try to get some of the beautification groups to work on that. So we're in the process of putting that together, and see where it goes, but I think it'll be a, a great project for.
Okay. I, I'll back up one item, the integrated services, that's a PUD, correct, or in Title 41?
No, it's a Title 41.
It'd be a Title 41.
Okay. Any other questions for John, or Paula?
Mm-hmm.